The meeting to order. And Kim, if we could do a roll call vote.
Actually Kelly, we're gonna, we, that's, that's the part of the agenda we changed. We're gonna do a pledge of allegiance for our roll call.
So is there another amended agenda?
Yeah, we sent one out this morning.
Hang on a minute.
That's the only thing that changed Kelly.
Okay, alright.
Was two and, two and three, we just flipped around. So it's a pledge of allegiance and then we'll call the roll.
Got it. Okay, let's do the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Okay, so, um, just a couple reminders. Um, this is being live streamed to YouTube and it's gonna be recorded, so. We're gonna be recorded for posterity's sake again. We're gonna do roll call votes for every, every vote. There are people gonna be potentially listening by, um, listening by phone calls and they will be able to at public, at the public hearing times, we'll be able to step in and speak. So. Alright, so with that said, Kim, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Bean.
Isabella County Vernon Township, present.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Uh, Mount Pleasant, um, uh, Isabella County, present.
Commissioner Campbell.
Roomfield Township, Isabella County, present.
Commissioner Rogers.
Uh, President Vernon Township, Isabella County.
Commissioner Vogel.
Oh, you're muted.
How's that?
Yep.
Okay, I'm in Denver Township, uh, Rose Bush, Michigan, Isabella County, present.
Commissioner Silker.
Present Gilmore Township, Isabella County, Michigan.
Commissioner Horton.
Present at my home, Union Township, Isabella County.
Commissioner Nyer.
Uh, Commissioner Nyer has contacted staff and has indicated that he has a conflict tonight, um, as he has another meeting to attend, so he will not be here.
Hey, all set?
Yep, I believe that was everyone.
Alright. So we have a, a twice amended agenda in front of us. Any other changes, staff, to this agenda?
Nope, there were no, no other amendments, no other changes.
Okay, uh, we need a motion to accept the agenda?
I'll make a motion Horton, that we approve the agenda.
Do we have a second? Vogel, second. Hey, Kim, if you could do a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Horton.
Yes.
Commissioner Bean.
Yes.
Commissioner Silker.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers.
Yes.
Commissioner Vogel.
Yes. Alright, thank you. Minutes from the last meeting. Any changes, adjustments, questions, comments? If, um, if not, I would entertain a motion to accept.
Move to accept, O'Neil.
And we have a second?
Rogers, second.
Hey, Kim, if we have a vote, please?
Commissioner O'Neil.
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers.
Yes.
Commissioner Vogel.
Yes.
Commissioner Silker.
Yes.
Commissioner Bean.
Yes.
And Commissioner Horton.
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Hey, thank you. Liaison reports, ZBA, Phil?
ZBA, the ZBA met, uh, acto, well, so to speak, met 21st. Um, at nine o'clock, we had two variances, 2004 in Nadwa Township and it passed four to zero. And also, we had a variance, 2005 in Sherman Township, and that also passed four to zero. And that was it.
Thank you. Uh, Parks and Rec, have you been there lately?
I have not.
Okay.
I will at the next meeting.
Okay, perfect. Okay, Board of Commissioners?
Uh, Board of Commissioners has been kinda quiet, there's nothing really new to report on the upcoming, uh, jail build or anything like that. Haven't had anything come through, uh, my way in a while, so stay tuned on that. I'm sure that's gonna be happening anytime soon with more information. The Board of Commissioners, all the Commissioners are, have been reelected except for one. And that unfortunately, isn't, because he did not run, is Chairman George Green. He will be leaving us at the end of the year. And the gentleman by the name of Terry Richardson, uh, lives out in the Beale City area, he'll be replacing George. Uh, otherwise than that, all the other county Commissioners will be returning for another two years. And that is all I have for you.
Alright, thank you. Normally we would do township concerns, but we're gonna roll that in with the public comment. So moving on to public comment. This is for comment for anything that's not on, coming up on the agenda. So if anybody has any comments they'd like to add, uh, both from the, for, in the township concerns or just general planning commission comments, now is the time. And I believe if you're dialing in, if you punch star nine, I believe, and then Ray will, will open up your microphone.
Hey Kelly, while we're waiting for people to, um, pipe in, if they're going to, um, we did get a call from Jackie Curtis, again, uh, Denver Township trustee. Uh, Jackie's doing, uh, the township's doing well, um, and she has nothing really to report. Um, but, uh, she will be participating today, watching on YouTube, and today is her 82nd birthday, so we wish Jackie a happy birthday.
Oh, happy birthday Jackie.
Happy birthday Jackie.
Happy birthday.
Mr. Chairman, we do have, uh, one hand that is raised. Uh, the caller with the last three digits in their phone number of 1-0-0, I believe you need to press star six on your phone to unmute yourself.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, sure can. Could you state your name, please?
Yes, my, my name is Mitchell Piper. I just wanted to confirm that you would be taking general public comment, uh, related to the special use permit within that section of, of it, and you, you don't want it right now, is that correct?
Right, correct, yep.
Okay, I will, uh, I will mute myself and wait for the next agenda item then, thank you.
Alright, thanks. Alright, any other hands raised?
Mr. Chairman, there are no other hands raised at this time.
Alright, well, we'll close the public comment, this first public comment section of the meeting, and we'll move on to public hearings. Staff, if you would, bring him up, special use permit 20-07, if you would, fill us in.
Yep, no problem. Um, so today, tonight we have a special use permit 20-08. Um, it is, uh, a request, uh, submitted by applicant and property owner Andy and Katie Hirschberger. They're in Rollin Township, section 28, property location is 1-0-0-3-5 South Wyman Road. The applicant has submitted a special use application for a rural production and processing facility, uh, to construct small storage, uh, sheds. And, uh, this is in an Ag 3 district located approximately one half mile north on South Wyman Road, uh, uh, north of West Jerseyville Road. Um, starting back in 2018, um, staff has worked with Mr. Hirschberger to correct a few violations that he's had for the commercial operation and the construction of, uh, a few buildings on his property, um, uh, that he's constructed prior to receiving permits first. Uh, as of this date of this memorandum, uh, Mr. Hirschberger, uh, has ceased all commercial operations on his property and complied with the ordinance, um, by receiving zoning permits for his home and accessory buildings on the property. There are currently no violations, no known violations on the pro, on Mr. Hirschberger's property at this time. As you may recall, in 2019, Mr. Hirschberger applied for, to conditionally rezoning his property, while the planning commission, uh, voted to, uh, recommend a denial there. Uh, the request was, uh, uh, withdrawn prior to making it to the County Board of Commissioners. Um, staff has been in contact with the property owner, Mr. Hirschberger and his attorney on several occasions leading up to this application. Mr. Uh, Hirschberger, uh, is submitting his application in order to resume his commercial operation, uh, under the rural production and processing facilities as a special land use, um, to construct small accessory buildings. The application was received in September, uh, of, of, on September 18th of 2020, and includes comments on sections 1203, general requirements for special land use, detailed site plan, documents showing compliance with, and agreeing to, um, comply with the requirements of section 1205 KK of the ordinance. Uh, staff has made some notes on the site plan, Ray, if you bring up the site plan really quick. Staff has made some notes in red on the site plan, uh, initially, uh, Mr. Hirschberger's application, um, unintentionally left off a greenhouse that was permitted, um, as well as, um, some screening, additional screening that staff has spoken to them about that they've agreed, um, to install. So we marked both of those on the, uh, um, um, site plan that was submitted with the application, and those are in red. Um, in the application, Mr. Hirschberger, um, has provided us with, uh, some answers to the section 1203 questions for general requirements for special land uses, which is in your applicant, it's, which is in the application on page seven. Uh, the applicant has also laid out in detail, um, comments on complying with the design standards for rural production and processing facilities on pages nine and 10 of his application. Um, those are both for sections 1205 KK. Um, staff did have some, um, areas of clarification that were needed after application was received. Um, and one of those was an area under 1205 KK4. Uh, the ordinance states that all activities, including storage, should be conducted within a completely enclosed building. Um, the applicant answered in his application that all active and substantial activities will be conducted in an enclosed building. Uh, for purposes of the ordinance and to make sure that the applicant understand that, we reached out to him and his attorney, and they have submitted, uh, to us in writing that all activities, including storage, should be conducted within an enclosed building, and they will comply with that section of the ordinance. Um, the second area of clarification we needed was, um, there was two separate areas in the application, uh, where they identified the building size that the app, the activity would be taking place in. One of them was the 36 by 36 area, the other one was 32 by 32. For clarification purposes, um, we had contacted, uh, the applicant's attorney again, and they indicated that the building size is actually 32 by 32. Uh, finally, the applicant has, um, provided a waste disposal plan for the planning commission's approval as required under section 1205 KK. Um, Mr. Hirschberger indicates that any waste generated from the building materials will be burned in an incinerator on site or will be burned to heat, um, Mr. Hirschberger's home in the winter months. Uh, language on the site disposal or on the waste disposal plan, uh, have been provided, uh, towards the end under report summary in your staff report. Um, in summary, upon our review of the application, staff has determined that it appears to be a complete application and meets the requirements of the ordinance. Staff has provided the planning commission with the site plan checklist for your review. Um, we did identify four areas in which we would recommend conditions or stipulations, and I'll read those for the record. These are recommendations if there was to be granted approval. The applicant shall, number one, the applicant shall provide a copy of the driveway permit or approval on the existing driveway for the Isabella County Road Commission for this use. The applicant shall maintain existing screening showing, uh, shown on the site plan labeled as trees. Additional screening shall also be installed and maintained as a staggered double row of evergreens beginning at the driveway running north 50 feet. The screening shall be outside of the right of way, and the trees shall be a minimum of three feet in height to start and placed 10 feet on center. Number three, the applicant shall comply with all requirements of section 1205 KK, rural production and processing facilities. And again, I threw that in there to kinda cover that section that I talked about earlier, about all activities being inside of a structure because that's required in 1205 KK. Um, and then the applicants, number four, the applicant's waste disposal plan, as described in the application, being either burned within an incinerator on site or utilized to heat the home, um, is approved by the planning commission. Um, staff has posted a sign on the property, prepared notices, and posted the request in the morning sun as per ordinance and state law requirements. Uh, as of, uh, the date of this memorandum, we had received no correspondence for or against the request. However, if you recall this morning, or if you have seen this morning, we sent to you emails, uh, from both, uh, the applicant. Um, a list of names of people who are in favor of the request. They're not all legible to me necessarily, but there's about, oh, a, somewhere between 15, 18 names on two pages. And then, um, another one that was sent to us later this afternoon from the attorney, uh, representing, uh, the Prestons. And that one is, I think, five pages long and has roughly about 30, um, names and streets and addresses and signatures on it. And, uh, that's, uh, that group of people, uh, urged the commission to deny the correct request, so they're opposed to, to the action. Um, staff has nothing additional for you at this time unless you have any questions for staff.
Thank you. Any, any questions, any, for staff? At this point. Alright, hearing none, is there, um, the applicant or representative like to comment on this?
Well, good evening. Gentlemen, my name is Tom White, I'm, uh, pro bono attorney for Mr. and Mrs. Hirschberger. Uh, Mr. Nyport has very adequately discussed, uh, what's, uh, going on here. Uh, the 32 by 32 addition that's going to be made to an existing agricultural building, frankly, it's where the horses are stalled. Um, is proposed to build these, um, these sheds. What, uh, what Andy's looking to do, big picture, is build, uh, chicken coops and, uh, small utility sheds. Not residential by residential, I mean typically hunting, uh, uh, cabins, that sort of thing. He is not looking to, uh, do any of that. He understands that if any of these utility sheds were to exceed 200 square feet, that, uh, building permit is required. Uh, he's been in contact with the Joint Construction Code Administration, and is familiar with how to accomplish that. The setbacks are adequate. I know that there's been some discussion about, uh, uh, road use. Uh, for, for your reference, uh, a medium sized shed to a large sized shed probably doesn't weigh any more than 1,500 pounds. Uh, they're transported by a two axle trailer on the, towed by a pickup truck. Uh, so any, uh, usage of, of the road is going to be minimal. The issue of employees did not, uh, not come up, but I addressed that briefly. Uh, the Amish tradition is to only employ Amish. Uh, that has actually some, uh, roots in, uh, tax law. And, uh, the tradition, uh, further than that is to only employ Amish and no more than three, uh, uh, no more than three non-family members. Uh, typically in these Amish operations, uh, need the very large families. It's not unusual to, uh, see these families with, uh, a dozen or more, uh, kids. And, uh, many of those, uh, children are engaged in, uh, in the family, uh, farm practice and would be employed here as well, uh, helping Andy and, uh, Katie manufacture these, these sheds. It's generally an Amish, uh, only, um, operation and primarily staffed by family. Uh, the hours, uh, we agree to, uh, seven by seven, remembering that Amish, uh, don't have any artificial light, um, other than a lantern. So in the winter months, uh, hours of opera are substantially curtailed, uh, simply because there's no light to work by. Um, there's been some, some, uh, incorrect information fed to the press. There was an article yesterday concerning a proposed sawmill that, um, uh, was being constructed. There is a story going around that this is an end run, that, uh, a sawmill, if approved, um, by the county board, uh, would be feeding, uh, this is Andy's son, Eli, would be feeding, uh, uh, Andy's operation. Simply not true. Uh, it's a, it's a fabrication. Among other things, um, the types of wood that are used are, are inconsistent. Uh, the Aspen wood, uh, et cetera, that, uh, Eli would be proposing to use, uh, primarily wood, uh, uh, we could think of it for pallet wood, uh, is inconsistent with, uh, a use for building sheds. So it is, it is affirmatively, uh, denied that there's any plan to integrate, uh, the Eli Hirschberger and Andy Hirschberger, uh, operations for any purpose. And I wanted to take, uh, some pain to, uh, to mention that to you. Uh, other than that, uh, um, I would love to answer any questions. Andy is here. Uh, you may be familiar that Amish have a, uh, uh, a tradition of avoiding cameras. Uh, he is sitting directly to my left, uh, and can hear everything that's going on, and is prepared to answer questions directly if you have any. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Weiss. Does anybody have any questions? For either Mr. Weiss or Mr. Hirschberger? Alright. Hearing none. I guess it is time to open the public comment portion of this meeting. So, anybody that, uh, wants to comment, go ahead and press star nine on your phone, and we will, we'll announce the last three digits to your phone number. If you would, please state your name. When you enter, and then go from there. Thank you.
Uh, caller with the last three digits in your phone number of 1-0-0, uh, you can unmute yourself.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, uh, and, uh, planning commission members. My name is Mitchell Piper. I am the attorney who represents Kim and Irving Preston. Um, I have been asked to come and speak with you today and, and to urge you to deny this special use permit, um, that will be, that has been applied for by Mr. Hirschberger. I want to begin briefly by saying that, that Kim and Irving are business owners in the community, and, uh, they don't begrudge anybody for being entrepreneurial in an effort to try to make a living for their family. But, uh, as was alluded to, to you before, what is clear to the Prestons and to us is that this has been a backdoor attempt to create an industrial zone that doesn't comply with either the, the letter or the spirit of the zoning ordinance or the, the master plan. We, we urge the, the commission not to consider Mr. Hirschberger's request in isolation, but to instead look at it in conjunction with the recent rezoning request that came before this commission and will be before the Board of Commissioners, uh, by his son Eli and next door neighbor. The old adage, uh, if it walks like a duck and talks like, or and, and talks like a duck, then it is a duck, right? The evidence here is, is clear that these two operations will not be separate. Eli's mill will supply the lumber and Andy will use that lumber as commercial shed business. I recognize that it, it's been indicated, uh, by, by their attorney and, and by the Hirschbergers that this isn't the case, but I have seen the, the, um, the evidence of the size of the lumber and the scale of the sawmill that's planned to be operated, and, and that's simply, i- it, it is a perfect pipeline. This operation of the, the nature and scale is, is light industrial, and it should be located in a light industrial area. Um, and moreover, these are not unsophisticated landowners. They, they know what they're doing. They're doing this with the advice of council, and that should certainly be taken into consideration. Two very brief points with respect to the zoning ordinance and specifically section 12.03, which sets forth the areas for the planning, uh, commission to consider. Subsection A requires that the, um, that the use be consistent with the county's master plan. Now, the master plan is rife with references to the county's interest in preserving, uh, and conserving the agricultural land and economy. I mean, that starts on the introduction on page four, continues on page 43, where it says that any threat to the long-term continuation of farming in the county must be taken seriously. Moreover, the master plan on page 46 cautions against allowing industrial operations just simply because they're gonna create some employment opportunities or additional tax revenue. Um, and it cautions against a- avoiding the traditional land use restrictions that would be required to place those types of operations, an operation like this, um, in, in the proper zone. Section 12.03C of the ordinance provides that the special use must be harmonious with the character of the adjacent properties. Again, this is agricultural land in an agricultural zone, whether we're splitting hairs between it being Ag 2 or Ag 3 simply doesn't matter. Um, there's zones in this, in this township and in this county where this type of operation would be appropriate. 10-0-3-5 South Wyman Road is not that location. And as was indicated by staff earlier, there are at least 30 signatures that have been presented, uh, to this commission showing that, that the neighbor and the neighborhood urges this, this commission to deny the request. And just finally turning back to the, the, the property owner's interest in, in making a living here. I, I do want to say that, you know, the body, this body is no doubt aware and familiar, uh, with the difficult balance that has to be struck between an individual landowner's interest and those of the community as a whole. Um, but we urge you to give weight to the decisions of those who wrote the ordinance, to those who- Can you hear me alright?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, there was just a, just a notification on the phone that I got there that it was, um, excuse me, that, so, to, to, um, give weight to the decisions of, of those who wrote the ordinance, those who wrote the master plan. In an effort to really guide the future land use decisions and avoid this type of kind of patchwork or ad hoc, um, zoning, zoning that, that's being asked, uh, of this board today. These laws and these principles have been in place for a long time, and they were in place at the time that, that Andy and Eli purchased, purchased these parcels and purchased these properties, and it was incumbent on them to research how these, uh, restrictions would impact their plans for the property. Not simply to, uh, engage the services of an attorney, pro bono or not, uh, to find ways around the restrictions that were in place. So for those reasons and, um, uh, the, the further reasons that, that, that we have submitted in terms of uh, our opposition to, to Eli Sawmill and, and the, the relationship that we posit it has to have to, uh, Mr. Hirschberger's operation and application here today. Uh, Kim and Irving Preston do ask this commission to deny the special use permit. Um, and again, we, we echo that there are at least 30 other neighbors who, who feel the same way. And so I thank the commission for the time. I thank the commission for, uh, the consideration, a- and again, we urge you to deny the special use permit.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Piper. Any other public comments?
Mr. Chairman, if it's appropriate, and with your permission, I'd like to, uh, respond in, in brief.
Let's see if there's any more, let's see if there's any more public comments.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, there are other public in attendance, but I do not see any other hands raised at this time.
Alright. Okay, Mr. Weiss, if you would like to, to respond.
Kelly, Kelly, would you like to, would you like to close the public hearing at this time?
Yes. Close the public, yes, close the public, uh, hearing portion at this point. And I guess Tim is just clarification, do we need to close the public hearing before Mr. Weiss speaks? That's part, was that?
Yeah.
That wasn't part of the public, that wasn't part of the public hearing, was it?
Yeah, he's part of the, he's the applicant here, and so he's going to express his, his position here afterwards. But the public has now had their chance to speak. If there's anybody who wants to raise their hand, they can do so, but, uh, we've had none, so we can close the public hearing.
Okay, alright.
Would it be appropriate to remind people how to raise their hand?
Sure, um, go ahead and click star nine on your phone. If you would like to raise your hand.
You're muted, Ray, but I believe Ray said there are no-
Correct. There are no hands raised at this point in time.
Right. So the, we'll close the public meeting portion of this, excuse me, the public hearing portion of this meeting. And Mr. Weiss, if you would like to respond.
Well, the couple of the larger points, Mr. Chairman, the Prestons want to make this an industrial operation. They keep coming back both to this application and in the application for next week, that this is light industrial, simply not the case. The milling and processing provisions that are within the zoning code are very clearly set forth that the processing of farm products, which includes trees, is perfectly acceptable in an Ag 1 or an Ag 2 district. This is not light industrial. That is a, that is a, an effort to color this as something that it clearly is not. It's chicken coops, ladies and gentlemen. We're building chicken coops here. We're not building large buildings, prefab buildings that are going to be taken apart, et cetera. We're talking about something that's going to fit on a two axle trailer to be built by Amish gentlemen and its family. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. So at this point, is there any other questions from the Planning Commission about this? To move forward, we need a motion and a second. So I would entertain a motion. Can't do anything with all the motion, folks. Got to have one.
For purposes of discussion, because we do need that for discussion, is that a correct statement, Tim, with Robert's rules orders? I am going to make a motion for discussion. And I'm going to do it choosing to approve, but it's only be for a discussion. So I'm going to do the following because I think there's questions of finding a fact I think the board has to go through. So that's my issue is we, I believe we have to really hit the findings of fact. So if we need to do that with a motion, I'm going to do a motion. But I have a lot of questions. So I don't want to make sure if I do a motion, can I still vote no? If I do want to approve, then I then vote no.
Right. We just, we need a motion in order to have discussion.
Then I will do a motion to approve, just so we can get that route going. Move to approve special use permit 20-08, SUP number 20-08, as submitted by Andy and Katie Hirschberger, to establish a rural production and processing facility in the agricultural buffer Ag 3 district and shall further be conditioned upon the following. One, the applicant shall provide a copy of the driveway permit or approval on the existing driveway from the Isabella County Road Commission for this use. Two, the applicant shall maintain existing screening shown on the site plan labeled as trees. Additional screening shall be installed and maintained as a staggered double row of evergreen trees beginning at the driveway and running north 50 foot. The screening shall be outside of the right of way and the tree shall be a minimum of three feet in height, placed 10 foot on center. Three, the applicant shall comply with all requirements of Section 12.05 K K K, rural production and processing facilities. Four, the applicant's waste disposal plan, as described in the application, is approved by the Planning Commission. And then the approval is based on the following findings of fact. And that's where I'm stuck on because we've not had any findings of fact. So what, do we get it? Do I get a support of that? Then we have the findings of fact, or how does that work?
Well, yeah, you can, you can get a support on this, Commissioner Horton, and then you can look back to the application, which the applicant has submitted for you, answers to sections 1203, which is a general criteria for the special use permit, to see if he's adequately answered those questions for you. And if not, you can question and have that discussion about that and then add that to your motion if you would like.
Okay, I will start on number one finding of fact. Okay.
Okay. Yeah, we haven't had a second yet.
Gotcha. Okay.
Call up Vogel. I would second that approval. Okay. Time for, time for, excuse me, time for some discussion.
Okay. I stepped up, so I get to go first, right? Lucky me. Okay. I'm going to go real basic first and then I'm going to ask some general questions. First one, is this storage shed considered to be rural production and a processing facility? I looked up under section 2.18, and I'm probably going to do this wrong, but under section 2.18, it talks about rural production and processing facilities. Then the answer, it does the assembly or finishing of cabinetry or wood products. Since we're assembling or cabinetry of wood products, I'm going to say that this would fit as a rural production and processing facility. Again, I'm not getting to the findings of fact and I'm just going through some discussion first. So I'm going to say that this falls under the rural production and processing facility.
1203 or 1204?
I'm actually in Article 2.
He's looking at, he's looking at the definition to ensure that the use-
I'm going, I'm going real basic. I'm starting out real basic. So I think it does. I think it meets the definition of rural. Now, I have another question is that is there is a non-farm dwelling? I look, I see a house on the site plan, so I'm assuming that the Hirschbergers or someone is going to live on that property. Is that a correct statement?
They are currently living on that property.
And they, and to maintain that, I believe they're going to have to make that a non-farm dwelling, someone's going to have to live on that property. Otherwise, that rural and production and processing facility special use will go away based according to the definition.
The use, the definition, the last sentence of the definition reads, "The use shall be located in an accessory structure on a lot and the principal use of that lot shall be as a farm or a non-farm dwelling."
I don't think they're considering that a farm, are they?
I do believe that they farm that, that land there and they raise animals there.
All right. Then that, that, okay, then that would be met then. So I was misinterpreting that. Good, we discussed that as we should have. Good. I disagree with the statement made by someone earlier. I believe it was one of the attorneys. I'm not going to go too much into that. This is different than zoning. This is special land use and keeping with the land use plan where we do permit a special land use in an Ag, well, this is an Ag 3. We do permit a special land use in an Ag 3. So I would say, as far as not being consistent with our master plan, we have made in our master plan a special land use exception to this. So I'm going to disagree with the statement that it's not in our master plan for that. It's just that you have to jump through an extra hoop for it. I'm probably simplifying it, but that's my interpretation of it. So I'm going to disagree with that statement by one of the, I believe it was one of the attorneys. I don't agree with that. Go ahead.
As well in the, in the, you know, in the master plan, when, when the ordinance was amended to, to put in place rural production and processing facilities, one of the activities or one of the goals, I believe, in the master plan dealt with allowing these farm entities or these homes in these farm locations to be able to do some work from home, to do other work outside of the farm, because farming activity wasn't always making it. So there is some sort of goals in our master plan that do allow for this type of an activity, somebody working from home outside of a regular home occupation type of activity.
Yeah. You just explained why we have an SLU designation for Ag 3 or for rural that would allow for that. With your excellent, with your excellent, that's kind of where I was going. Thank you for clearing that up for me. I do appreciate. It's been a long day. So thank you for doing that. So that as far as the, just the basic definitions go, as far as I can see. Now, getting to the actual requirements. Again, this is where I like to help from my fellow commissioners. Before we get into that, I kind of went over some basics. I guess the first one would be whether the proposed development is in general agreement with the county's adopted comprehensive plan. Maybe I just answered my own question as to that, as far as the SLU use and in Ag 3. So I'm going to say as to A, I'm going to say that does meet that. I don't know how the other commissioners, if you want, anybody wants to chime in or I give their comments too, that's fine. I mean, I don't run it. So I'm just going out loud, so.
I would agree with that. We have, we have a allowed allowance for that function in the district. So that's almost a given.
I would add to that, that as well, while you're reviewing the section 1203, these, these criteria, 1203, general criteria for special land use, the applicant has provided you with answers to all of these. And I would look at those to ensure that not only what you bring forward as fact or information is, you know, do you agree with and have they provided you with the information that supports that, that, that general requirement as well?
I did see that. Do you want me to read the applicant's answer? Or does anybody, everyone can read it and comment on it? So listen, you want to go, I think we should go that route. Everyone read it and they comment on it if they want to.
Yeah, go down through them.
So the, I mean, the applicant has answered that applicant's personal. Yeah, I totally agree with that. That's pretty much sums it up. What I just said, kind of in a written format, I guess if I would, but I probably looked at that, I probably wouldn't have stumbled on my words so much, but there you go. Okay. Any commissioners have anything to say on that? Anything else? And I'm going to say that that is, that meets it as far as I am concerned, as far as my motion, as far as A goes. Under B, whether the density or use characteristics of the proposed development are detrimental or could be considered to be significantly detrimental to adjacent properties and land uses. The applicant has answered, no, applicants construct storage sheds using hand tools and saws and drills. Noise generation is minimal. The nearest residential properties are across west of Wyman Road, approximately 277 feet from the shop and that one other home is 350 foot from the shop. As far as, again, I don't think as far as the density or use characteristics go in the special land use, I'm not looking at the other property, his son's property has nothing. That's an apple and an orange as far as I am concerned with this issue. I don't have a problem with B.
I concur. Any comments about that regarding that from anybody else?
Next up, I'm getting some feedback here. I don't know where that's coming from, but the special land use shall be designed, constructed, operated and maintained in a manner harmonious with the character of adjacent property and the surrounding area. I'm not going to talk about his son's property because that really has not been adjudicated, it's not been decided yet, even though this board approved it. But as far as this board goes, this board has approved of land use, just this board, this planning commission, the neighboring property.
Recommended approval.
Recommend, yes, recommended, correct. This, the applicant answered, the shop is not yet constructed. Let's see. And we'll conform to, they didn't really answer as far as the surrounding area goes. I think the neighbors are split on it. I think that's one of their issues is, is it harmonious with the character of adjacent property in the surrounding area? Again, I think, I think you can, I do, I do recognize some of the neighbors as far as their, so far as their issues go with it. However, it is consistent with our master plan within a special land use permits, as long as they're meeting that. And as far as I'm concerned, it does match the character of the adjacent property and the surrounding area. So.
Okay. Any comments?
Steph would say that, you know, the, the structure that they're building onto the back of Mr. Weiss had indicated is an agricultural building. You know, the area is vastly, you know, open space, farmland, some large lot residential, but many of the buildings out in that area are pole style construction and agricultural style buildings. I believe that this is going to be constructed in that same characteristic.
Yeah, I agree that those buildings are constructed in that same characteristic, keeping with it. So any other commissioners have anything with C? Talking about D, the special land use shall not be hazardous to adjacent property or involve uses, activities, materials or equipment, which will be detrimental to the health, safety or welfare of persons or property due to traffic, noise, smoke, odor, fumes or glare. Again, the applicant has made, they use dimensional lumber of typical sizes to construct storage sheds. They may also purchase metal roofing material. As far as the traffic, noise, smoke, odor and fumes and glare, I know at one time we were concerned about traffic going up and down, but again, this is, they're going to be building sheds and it will take some time to build sheds, especially the way they're going to make them. So they're going to have to get the wood in, they're going to have to get the materials in, take some time and then take it back out. I don't see that being a high traffic volume. Yeah. So will, will there be traffic going up and down, taking those in and taking those out? Yes. But I don't see that as being excessively high traffic or getting away from the agricultural mechanisms of the community. So I, and as far as no noise, smoke and odor, odor, they talked about burning. Well, I don't think, you know, that's going to be excessive. If it is, then certainly they can, there's probably some ordinance as regards to that. So I'm going to say that the applicant meets that criteria too, as far as I'm concerned.
I have a question on that one. I have some friends in Clare County that are contractors that have been fined before for burning of construction debris, especially treated, womanized, painted materials. And it sounds like the sheds will be constructed out of those style materials to be able to hold up to the elements outdoors. And that was my question is how would you burn that and not cause fumes and odors?
Good point. Tim?
Again, that's going to be a question for the applicant. I don't know if Mr. Weiss is still on, if he could answer that question for us.
Let me direct that to Andy. Andy, do you use treated lumber in construction of these sheds, particularly for the skids? And do you use any treated lumber other than the skids?
Just the subfloor and there's no, hardly any waste.
And what's the size of the dimensional lumber on the subfloor? Yeah. We've got four by eight plywood. I call it plywood sheets as a subfloor. These buildings are typically constructed on four by four skids. That's how they're moved around. And though that is treated lumber, the rest of the lumber is untreated lumber. Lumber is, a small point, lumber is burned by the Amish year round. Remember that they heat by, their stoves that they cook on are heated by wood or fueled by wood. So although we think of burning lumber as a winter time activity, it's 12 months a year for these folks. These stoves are really quite amazing. They have hot water systems integrated within it, et cetera. So they go through a fair amount of lumber burning all during the year, but there is that small amount of treated lumber. Thank you for the question.
So, so I think, you know, obviously that answered your question there, Nathan, but you know, part of their waste disposal plan, they've indicated that they're going to burn it in an incinerator within the house. You could add to the stipulations that any of the womanizer treated lumber cannot be burned on site and they would have to develop a waste disposal plan for that material, not just letting it sit around pile up. But what are they going to do with it? And you can, you can make that requirement as a stipulation as well, if you'd like.
And Tim, that's not objectionable to Mr. Hirschberger.
Nathan, would you like to add that? Because I certainly would if you wouldn't. So.
Yeah, I would.
Tim, how do we do that?
So, so why don't we get through, why don't we get through all of this and see if any other amendments? And then if there's any amendments to the original motion to add this, the stipulation, then we can go ahead and add those. I'll keep noted it.
Okay. I guess I would go, yeah, because he talks about doing some metal roofing too.
Hang on one second. I just want to clarify. Nathan, on, on the instance when the people were fined for burning construction materials, I just, I don't, I'm not necessarily questioning putting this on as a stipulation, but were they fined for burning treated lumber? Or they were fined for, instead of going to a landfill?
No, it was for treated materials.
Because you're, it was specifically treated materials?
Yes.
All right.
A lot of times contractors will get fined for, uh, open burning of construction materials, whether it's treated or not, because they don't have a permit to open burn.
Right. I didn't realize there was an issue with, with treated lumber being burned, to be honest with you. I wouldn't want to do it on a campfire, but.
But if, if it's not objectionable, you know, to the applicant, I think we can just add it to the list and we can, we can add it as an amendment at the end.
Anybody else have anything with D?
Not I.
Okay. The special number E, the special land use shall be adequately served by. Uh, I scribbled down my section by essential public facilities and services. Or it shall be demonstrated that the person responsible for the proposed special use shall be can, shall be able to continually provide adequate services and facilities deemed essential to the special use under construction. Said facilities or services shall be approved by the Central Michigan District Health Department. All right. The applicant. We talked about the waste lumber already. The bathroom facilities are going to be located at the applicant's home, which is located on site. I'm assuming that's going to have to meet everything with, uh. Central Michigan Health Department, Tim, I believe that's going to be automatically corrected.
That is correct.
That's outside, um. Yeah. I mean, I don't, I don't know how to answer that one other inside. I feel that they meet that. Any commissioners, Nathan, you had a good point on the last one. You got anything you got on this one?
Nope.
As I'm concerned, they do meet that.
Is this going to be, is this where you'd ask a question about it being a facility where customers come to, or is it just a processing? Facility where they, I mean, would, do they need parking and all the other things that go along with having a commercial entity?
Yeah, that's all part of the site plan. That's part of the, uh, other part of the application that, uh, we went over. Um, and as discussed in, um, 1205 KK. Um, I do believe only contracted sales of items produced onsite are permitted on the premises and no visible change to the outside appearance. Evident, um, in the conduct of activity. So basically when this was written, what they were saying was. We don't want this to be a commercial or a retail establishment, but somebody might show up with their truck to pick up. They might not be delivering. But somebody else might show up. So you might get a customer to come there. Um, and they do have plenty of parking up by the building, um, adequate, uh, to meet our ordinance requirements. But for the most part, this is not a retail, you know, style, uh, uh, um, activity.
Tim, you're absolutely right about that. And let me add one other thing. Andy only sells to one person. He's sort of, think of a distributor. Uh, so Andy's got one customer.
So, so therefore Tom, it's all contracted sales then?
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Next up, no special use shall be conducted between the hours of eight PM and eight AM unless otherwise approved by the planning commission. And I believe section 12 0.05 KK, uh, agreed to be limited the hours of seven to seven under that section. So. I think that's what the applicant is looking, um, is from the seven AM to the seven PM. So I think that one. Is, as far as the eight to eight, I think we're going to change that to seven to seven. So I guess it does meet the requirements under that. So.
Yeah. Again, the stipulation that's in place that they have to comply with, uh, uh, with, uh, section 1205. Uh, subsection KK, which requires them not only to be able to be limited to the operation of seven to seven. Um, we don't have to change that or do anything else for this type of use. That's what they're, that's what they're allowed to operate within.
Cause that falls into the otherwise, unless otherwise approved, right?
That is correct.
Okay. So 12.05 KK two is seven AM to seven PM. So, okay. So I, that's fine. And I think it meets that. So we had our findings of fact. We had one change that I, that I believe is that. Nathan, if you want to, how are we going to do that? You want, why don't you make that and we can add, how do, how, how should we do that, Tim, as far as the rules of order go?
Well, so what, what I would do is you have, um, Kelly, you have a motion, um, and, and a support out there. You guys have gone through discussions. So there would be a, an action to amend the initial motion to include an additional stipulation. And then we'd get a second on that. We'd vote on that, uh, amendment, and then you would vote on the, um, the, uh, the full application. I did jot some notes down. If you'd like me to read, I think I've covered what you're looking for. Uh, and it would be to add this stipulation, uh, to the motion. That's no burning of treated lumber as part of the waste disposal plan shall take place. And the applicant must provide for off-site disposal of those materials.
Nathan, is that your amendment?
That's my amendment.
I will support that on my side.
We can simply add that to the existing motion or does no motion need to be restated?
According to Tim, we have to vote on that amendment. So we have to put it up for discussion and, and I don't think there'll be any more discussion. And then you have to call for a vote on that amendment, Kelly, I think is what Tim said.
Yep.
So we have to call for a vote on the amendment to add it to the motion. Okay.
Correct.
All right.
So we're, we're adding stipulation number five, as I stated, um, with the motion by Nathan and support by, uh, Horton. Um, at this time, we'll vote on that. That'll make the motion changed to the approval. Um, based on the following, um, uh, five, uh, criteria, five, uh, stipulations rather than four, and then you can take a vote on that.
All right. So at this point, we need a roll call vote on adding this amendment to the existing motion.
Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Horton.
Yes.
Commissioner Silker.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Vogel.
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
And Commissioner Bean.
Yes.
Okay.
So now you're back to your, so now you're back to your original motion, uh, that's been amended, uh, with the fifth stipulation added.
All right. And we had, and we had the findings of fact. And as far as my discussion goes, I think I had all my questions answered. I will make one comment on as far as the discussion part goes. Uh, one of the things that concerns me, I will be very honest with you. I think I've mentioned to Mr. Neepport in the past, and. I think I mentioned to this board in the past is that concerns me when I see applicants come after the fact and say, hey, I got caught and I'm going to do something. That just really. Now, I don't see ticks me off. That bothers me. I don't think we have anything in our ordinance that really, uh, addresses that strongly enough. I don't think, I don't see anything that really addresses that other than if they correct it, then they can make application. It looks like that's what they have done. Um, I also feel that the property to the south, the sun's property that we had a discussion on. That to me, I, I can't put that into play with this. This has to be looked at on its own. Um, so that's what I'm looking at. And that's why I'm looking at this solely on its own. Um, as far as that, because that's a different person's property and they're entitled to do what they can do with their own property. So. That's my feeling and, um, we'll go from there. That's the rest. That's the end of my part of the discussion on it. So. Other, other board members can comment and we'll take a, you know, go from there.
Right. Any other discussions about, about this application?
Kelly, I know that in the application, that on the applications, Mr. Hirschberger has two addresses. The local address and an out of state address. Is he himself going to be running this operation? Or is that going to be hired out to someone else?
May I respond to that, please?
Yes, go ahead.
Ma'am, when, uh, when the Hirschburgers bought this property, they were moving from New York. So the address that you see on the, uh. Original land conveyancing document, New York address. Their entire family has moved from New York, lives at the address on, uh, Wyman Road. That is their home.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Well, I think it's time for a vote. Kim?
Commissioner Silker.
Yes.
Commissioner Bean.
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers.
Yes.
Commissioner Vogel.
Yes.
Commissioner Horton.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Yeah.
Commissioner. Campbell.
No.
Six yes. One no, motion carries.
All right. Find my agenda again here. Okay. Moving on to other businesses, excuse me, other business, non-public hearings of Fremont Township farmland agreement. Tim?
Yes, um, the, uh, you have a farmland agreement in front of you. It's, uh, Fremont, Fremont Township, uh, section 28. This is sent over to us by the clerk. Uh, it's a thirteen and a half acre parcel. Um, uh, the application appears to be complete with the exception of the number of years of the contract. Um, we will mention that in our response back to the clerk that there was, that it was, um, they need to state a number of years of contract. The property is currently being used for agricultural purposes. Uh, the township zoning is general agriculture. The township future land use, uh, is unknown. I believe we contacted the township and they weren't sure. Um, that they knew where their, um, um, land use map was, and we didn't see anything online, so we were unable to get it. But under county, um, zoning, it would be considered an ag two, uh, zoning classification. So. Um, this is again, a consensus item that we can send back, um, to the, uh, to the, um, clerk. Um, that this has been reviewed by the planning commission. There are several blocks of PA 116 lands in and around the area. Um, and some of it's just adjacent to this, uh, this parcel as well. So if you're, if you're satisfied with, uh, the review and taking a look at it, we'll go ahead and send a consensus back to the clerk. Uh, that it was reviewed and it's incomplete with regard to the number of years. Otherwise it was complete.
Any questions or comments? Like we're good to go.
All right. We'll go ahead and move that back to the clerk.
Okay. We're back to another public comment section. For this meeting. Um, this is there again, public comment for, for things that, that weren't on the agenda. So if you would, anybody has comments, please press star nine on their phone and Ray will announce you in.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, there's, uh, currently no, uh, public in attendance of the meeting.
All right. We'll close the meeting to public comments then. And are there any staff comments?
Uh, staff does not have any additional comments at this time. Um, I already wished Jackie a happy 82nd birthday, but I'll do it again at this time. Uh, other than that, I have no additional comments.
Commissioner comments, um, Phil? Anything you want to add?
Nothing whatsoever.
Okay.
None whatsoever.
All right. Anne, Silker, anything you'd like to add?
Thank you.
Okay. Tim, O'Neal?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Horton?
I'm going to be surprisingly quiet on this and just say that I wish my commissioners well. Uh, just remember the three things, wear your mask, socially distance and wash your hands.
Hey. Nathan, any comments?
Nope.
We kind of did this a little different, you know, Jimmy going through the. The ordinance line by line. Any comments? Did that seem to work well for people?
Well, we had two attorneys. And you.
Wasn't all bad.
Yeah. And I think that's, I really want, we, it was very important. We made a good, as good as record as we could do. Cause. You know, you know, it's, you know, that's, that was my thought on that. Yeah. So.
Uh, staff, staff would jump in. That's, um, that's the appropriate thing to do, whether the attorneys are there or not. I think we should. Get in the practice of utilizing that questions. Um, when it comes to special land uses, um, that's part of why we make, uh, those questions or we add those questions to your staff reports. Um, and many times we have the applicant actually answer those questions. If they didn't answer it adequately enough for you, there's nothing wrong with us going through it and saying, well, we don't necessarily agree with that. You know, and then see if they, see if the applicant has some other explanation, or maybe they weren't clear to you. That then does meet that criteria, because if you go through those, those criteria and you find, um, you know, those, those facts to be found. Um, it's going to hold us up in, in court in most, most every case.
Okay. Well.
You did miss, you did miss Mr. Campbell's comments, I believe. Unless you hit him first.
No, I didn't. Sorry about that. Bob, any comments? Apologize.
Not at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Um, your, your microphone is gone off here and it, and it kind of changed your picture left. So I guess I thought you checked out, but.
No.
Apologize. All right. At this point, um, take, we'd accept a motion to adjourn.
Horton motion to adjourn.
Second, O'Neal.
Hey, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bean.
Yes.
Mr. O'Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Vogel.
Yes.
Ms. Silker. Commissioner Silker, I'm sorry.
That looked like a yes. That looked like a yes.
And Commissioner Horton.
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
All right. Meeting is adjourned. See you next month.
Everybody be safe. Have a good Thanksgiving and, uh, stay away from your family. We'll see you guys.
Take care. We'll see you.